I think we should do my alphabetical order. Change it up.
Okay.
No, I don't know. Do we do that?
It would be easier because they have done it very different way. They also mix up the order. So instead of going first word, second word, third word. They would go, they would do it that way. One time, they go backwards. So that so that the same people weren't following the same order every time. And how council, council could establish its own rules as to its own procedures.
When can you establish that? Hold up.
Well, you could. It says you can establish rules and you get a compensation. Sir, it says you can establish. I exchange. It doesn't say change.
The November first, twenty twenty two, meetings of the city of O'neana County Council is called Order. Rule.
Here. South member working. House member babies.
Here.
House member.
Here.
House member party two. Yeah. House member person.
Here.
House member anything.
Here.
House member that.
Here.
House member though. Here.
Everybody wishes fun, Dave, and the pleasure of witness.
What leaders stood what like the United States over there into the Republic where we stand one nation under our eight is liberty and justice for all.
Good. And I'd like to take just a moment to honor former councilmember Steve Kendra who passed away unexpectedly. And then we're about to take a moment. Thank you very much. All right. We have with us electronically Jonathan Gibbs, partner of B S P. And a short presentation done. The floor is yours.
Thank you all so much for having me and especially thank you for having me electronically here. It's a bit of a drive from Albany, especially late at night. And I actually hit a deer going to a client last week, so I my my vehicle is not exactly doing so well right now. So it's especially unfortunate and thankful to have you all here via Zoom. So as you mentioned, my name is Jonathan Gibbs. I'm from B S T. We are the independent auditor audit firm of the city. The the common, the city council appoints us and we annually perform all required audit reports and procedures in order to comply with the city's financial statements as well as the federal single audit. We began our work all the way back in May and through June, July, and August, we completed both the financial statements as well as the city's federal single audit prior to issuing the city's final financial statements and same little audit report prior to the September thirtieth deadline in accordance with the federal government filing requirements. So today we have four deliverables that we have prepared and provided to you folks on the council that I would like to briefly discuss. In general, though, I'd like to start out and just by saying this is another successful audit of the city, which has become kind of what I've had a similar report annually. We have no findings within the financial statements, no internal control deficiencies, no findings within the single audit report. And there are no matters that are required to be communicated to you folks in your roles as those charged with governance over the city's financial statements as well as their internal controls. So previously, we provided you with bound reports as well as PDF copies of all of the items that we've presented to you and gone finalized. And I just want to start with the financial statements. We issued a clean opinion and unmodified opinion over the financial statements of the city. The the report itself has been changed around a little bit in terms of how it's the paragraphs are ordered in comparison to prior years. If you were to take a look at the city's financial report in previous years, it's been changed a little bit in accordance with generally accepted auditing standards. However, the content has not changed and that content of which is to say that we issue unmodified clean opinions over all reporting units of the city, the city's governmental activities, the city's business type activities, in addition to the notes of the financial statements and the required supplementary information. Pages seven through fifteen are the management's discussion analysis. This is prepared by the finance department to discuss the current year of the city. In addition to some other qualitative information that's useful for the reader of the financial statements. Page sixteen through seventeen is the statement of net position as well as a statement of activities. The these are the governmental activities of the city. And prior to, excuse me, just after that, at pages eighteen through twenty one are the governmental financial statements. These are prepared on the modified accrual basis of accounting, and these are your fund financial statements. So just taking a quick read through these items, the total governmental funds, fund balance decreased about four point four million dollars to about ten point two million dollars at December thirty first of twenty twenty one. This is principally the result of the capital projects fund as the city continues its capital expenditures. The capital projects fund decreased fund balance of about five point five million dollars during the year. This will be replaced by future debt issuances as well as grant proceeds and potentially some contributions from the city's general fund. The general fund increased fund balance during the year from one point about one point four million dollars to an ending balance of about fourteen million dollars. It's another strong year for the general fund within the city. No other funds had significant changes that I would point to you. Certainly, they're all prepared. The other governmental funds, in addition to the business type activities within the city's financial statements are on the subsequent pages. The remainder of the financial statements are the notes of the financial statements. I typically try to discuss any major changes that have been implemented, such as accounting principles or accounting standards that have come out. So that if you were to read the financial statements for one year over the other, I would point to any major changes that there have been in previous years. We've had such items such as pension statement as well as the other post employment benefit statement. But during twenty twenty one, there were nothing significant that I would point you folks to these, the notes of the financial statements read much like they do in previous years, and there's been no major modifications. Were there any questions on the financial statements themselves before I continue on to the other three reports that we've issued?
No question.
There being no question, I'm going to continue on to the single audit. So the the city is a recipient of over seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of federal funding during the year, which requires a federal single audit. This year, there was only one major program within that federal single audit, which is the Department of Transportation Airport Improvement Program. We audited that program and found there to be no findings, both in terms of the the funds expended by the city, in addition to the internal controls implemented by the city over that federal funding. So again, the single audit is filed with the federal government by September thirtieth annually. And once again, the city's in compliance with that deadline with no findings to be reported to the federal government. The next report that we have is the State Department of Transportation Audit. Annually, the New York State requires us to perform a Department of Transportation audit over the funds expended by the city. This report again yielded no findings, and there's nothing that would bring to your attention within that report in terms of internal control deficiencies or or other matters to make you aware of. Again, a clean report, as has been the case for the past numerous years of the city, no significant items to bring to your attention. The final document that we have is a required audit communications letter. This is addressed to you folks in your role overseeing the city. This document requires us to just formally communicate how the audit went, basically. Were there any significant issues, any difficulties? If there were any accounting policies implemented by the city that we're in disagreement with? Any audit adjustments or uncorrected misstatements would be also disclosed within that document. But there is nothing within that document that would bring your attention to the city's accounting policies and in basis for their estimates within the financial statements. We concluded to be reasonable, as are the internal controls of the city. Were no limitations by management during our audit. Management was fully cooperative and helpful during our audit, and there were no audit adjustments during our twenty twenty one audit year end. With that, that concludes the four reportable items that we have. I am happy to take any questions that any folks have in relation to the city's audit.
Does the council have any questions? Jonathan, it appears that the council has no questions.
Mayor.
It doesn't appear that the council has any questions, Jonathan.
Great. Again, thank you so much for your time, and especially I always like to conclude this by thanking the finance department for all of their hard work and the flexibility that they have in helping us receive all the required documentation that's typically extensive documentation that we request. The cooperation of the city and the city's finance department is certainly very much appreciated. So thank you, folks.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Thank you all, and have a great evening.
All right. With that, we will move to petitioners and public hearings. There is a public hearing on the ordinance women's chapter three hundred dash thirty four of the code of the city of O'nean, entitled fraternity, sorority, and membership association. I'm here to speak on that. And it appears that there is not, so we'll close that public hearing and we'll move on to the extensioners. Do we have anyone here who would like to speak?
Yes. Hi, Joe Timey, Hudson Street. I just wanted to echo Jonathan's statements and congratulate Ginny and Greg on a clean audit. I'm sure Ginny would be the first to say that she doesn't, it's not done alone, which is true. I mean, there's a lot of work from the department heads, their designees and our staff that go into getting an opinion like that. But I also firsthand being the effort that Ginny has put in, not just throughout the year to make those clean audit opinions happen, but also effort in preparing the financial statements, which is something that is, I think it's important to say that it's not commonly done. I think a lot of times, you know, either companies or municipalities may outsource the actual financial statement preparation to our, to their auditors. And I think the fact that Ginny is able to do that and do it so well and accurately, and it really is a tremendous amount of work. So I just wanted to to also recognize those efforts as well in this process. Thank you.
And A G, I see you here.
Yes. I had emailed you, Mayor, and I suppose carry his load of regrets and he's about the possibility of having an internship program here at the state government level. I was wondering if there would be a possibility of that happening. I talked to my local science advisor, who regardless is the outgoing chair of the political science department at Suncup. Thought it was a great idea, and wanted me to bring it up to the common council to see whether it be appointed and. What did I say about the whole thing?
Well, I can say that we have in the mayor's office two interns from SUNY and one coming from Harvard. So there's certainly an appreciation of the internship programs. We can talk about that.
Okay.
Great. With that, we'll move on to boards and commission reports, and we'll go to our Commission on Community Relations and Human Rights. And we didn't, in fact, because we have a blank screen where Luke Murphy's face might be. I will move on then to the Board of Public Service, you're off the hook, Scott, if you're not.
All right, so this goes all the way back to October sixth. We had promise was an unsafe building in Sixth Grove Street, which was. I'm trying to read my notes. Anybody ever seen my writing? It's about that big. So I did make it an unsafe building. They gave ninety days for the homeowner, which the homeowner was there working with the board to remove an upper part of structure of the porch, because there's some structural issues there. The homeowner from listening in has been working with Stephen Coates and in this board to be able to come to a good conclusion on doing that. We also, Forty Street, they approved to to suspend the the invoice in the building. That was a house that was being sold, was in transition, and it feels to give it to the new homeowner to put it on the taxes. That was also a death of a past city employee as well. And the house was in transition, it moved down to Florida, and it was just lost in the shuffle. Who would own it? We talked about one eighty nine Chestnut Street. That was declared as an unsafe building as well. They've asked for it to be is a word up, made safe, securing the structure and trying to get the roof done. And then two forty three Chestnut Street was brought in front of us, which was a nuisance, an unsafe building. They ordered that that be vacated immediately, immediately, be in ten days. And then it's going to be to be secured in ten days, and then they're supposed to go back and make sure the stuff is working, uh, secure stuff in thirty days.
Thank you, Scott. Do we have any questions for? Next one, I'm going to. So what was the address of the the last one we got?
Two forty three Chestnut Street.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And I don't know, do we have audio in yours? Member Murphy.
Yes, I can. Can you hear me?
Join us, yes, and we are still in our Boards of Your Mission Reports section of the agenda, and we're glad to see you. And if you can, report on the Commission on Community Relations and Human Rights.
Certainly. So the commission met last Thursday, I believe it was. There was, it was a short meeting, but a lot was discussed. I was unable to attend, but I did reach out and ask for any additional business other than what was on the video, and and nothing was. The the commission is currently working on a combination postcard brochure flyer advertisement type thing that that talks about the commission as well as provides a template for the Trailblazer Award. The commission is currently looking at recommending a new commissioner to you, Mayor. They're still kind of going through a vetting process, so they don't have someone quite yet, but that that will likely be coming down the pike, so to speak, relatively soon. There is continued work in towards strengthening and and continuing building. The connection with Job Corps, working on future outreach. And former chief Doug Brenner is is open to coming back and doing workshops with the commissions on things like noier rights and similar things. And it was a short minute, I think it was about a meeting, about twenty five minutes, but they 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 did a pretty good job getting quite a few things.
Terrific. I sort of come to me. Do we have any questions for comments for? I see none. So thank you very much, Luke. Okay, moving on to our committee reports, we'll start with finance and human resources. We met toward twenty fourth. And the items that we had on our agenda, except for the transit port mirror. For to tonight's agenda. And so I'm trying to answer any questions you might have. And so agenda. Any questions for Lynn on it? None. Mayor, if you want, we can move into the economic development committee. You read my mind. We met at quarter twenty fifth. And we we had a pretty good discussion on the three items on our topic. We did keep the properties that are deficient in property school taxes on our on our agenda as a topic. And we're hopeful that the next time we meet, we'll get to have our financial director meet with us and give her perspective on how maybe we can create a hybrid system to this so that we can bring something back to the council to look at. We talked more about the alleyway improvements. Alleyway West was given a OCI grant, and from that, the improvements will include cleaning, lighting, and some aesthetic improvements, and I think that's very exciting. I think it is opportunity to continue talking about alleyway East, which is a much, much larger project, and we'll be working with our community developer and her staff on moving ahead and sort of that. That is definitely a larger project, and will take quite some time to get through. And then we talked about how do local developers enter into the process of being knowledgeable about grants? And Judy, I think you might put an excellent idea of making small videos and having that on her website. So if somebody's interested in doing a certain project, she's going to start answering questions that could arise those frequently asked questions for local developers to want to view the videos. So I think that was a great approach. That's her idea, and we look forward to seeing that probably come through fruition. That's what we did on October twenty fifth. That's terrific. March Davies.
Will, can you clarify east and west of that? East and west delineation, is that beats or is it?
So we're on beats, and I'm looking with Main Street to my back.
I know east and west, I'm good with that.
So yeah, so just, I don't know, I'll just name them right now, and I'm sure the owners of those alleyways will come up with something, but just to start the conversation right now, that's the only way I could do it.
Yeah, so east is east of beats, that little section, and then west is everything else, and is that extend all the way down past, I mean, all the way down to?
Community Bank. So if you're on the east one, you're going to go from D's all the way down to Community Bank. That's that's kind of, that's a whole line. Whereas the other one, west. Three or four buildings.
There's that area, but then there's the parking lot behind the old Brisbane building, and then there's another section over there.
So potentially.
West, west, that's on the first.
You could get all the way to Chestnut Street, and then that's one of the ideas is trying to get folks to go from a parking lot back into that alleyway, say, anybody that's going to be looking at the Chestnut Street Theater. As you all know, that there are some friends of the of the theater group that are very active and are trying to look at that and and revitalize that. So these are some of the ideas that we're just kind of processing through. I can say I think that to that on the the other side, the west side. So I'm with it, May, the other day, and he's going to mash the OCI lighting on the other side, so they'll be lighting on both sides. And I was in the room, and he called the local paper to to fill some of the chuckles there, and so that'll be taken care of as well. And so it's it's the start of something great.
Yeah, right. I know, if I may just add, I did also speak with Ed May about that, so we can coordinate all the building owners getting the same, like the same kind of lighting. So it's consistent throughout, and I did eventually get a hold of the the man who owns the building in between the historical society and one where roots has. And he's also interested in either applying for the grant or, you know, also doing the same kind of thing. So hopefully, we can get that whole stretch, but up with some nice lighting. And then the hope is that it'll serve as an example for other building owners to kind of do the same thing.
Right. And then it becomes a space that is inviting and potentially used for.
And safer.
Yeah. I do want to give credit to Emily and her idea on the alleyway. So I know it's probably taking longer than you wanted to. Welcome to go. Great. Any other questions or comments for Glenn on the economic development kind of support?
Okay. Terrific. Thank you. Now we'll move on to the city administration report. Few brief updates on some recent issues of in margin contractors in town today. Working nationally, working across walks and stop artists, and use of the lower down the center street. Or at the one, yeah. We're very on the screen, focusing on areas near the schools, in history, shut up, you're a tree. What is in the word directly to the three days next week? Getting many of the, I think, roughly ninety or so intersections now that E W would ask. So that's good. Streetlight maintenance contractor was also in town today. They'll be here at least a day a week or next several weeks, working to address various outstanding issues from the inverted project. Now, there's been some complaints from, often it has been reported multiple times, but said we had issues with the contractor that had done the installation, not thinking it will get back. This is the new contract, we're in this contract, and C W has said they agree with me that I feel an optimistic position. And then lastly, they questioned about tracking signals on Main Street at Walling, have Third Street, those were going to flash, you need to know, I believe, now as a trial basis to see how that would work with those signals potentially not there or in that flash mode. So that trial ends on November seventh, we can gather some information to feedback on residents and drivers. I will. And I do that, I do that regularly. They're giving it away, it has been, or maybe some. Sorry, that's awful, made in bird, made in long.
Any guess, Dave? Greg, I know you and I talked about this a little bit, the sidewalks on Upper Elm, and then the section that are missing on Normal Avenue. I know that, I mean, I'm assuming that they're not coming this week to do the work, but since the thorn in November, what's the backup plan? And as I said before, the the phones keep slowly disappearing around those missing sections, they're over the leaves, and I think at the very least, if the crews can keep up and just pay attention every now and then and run through there and drop other cones, especially as we get closer to the weekends. But what's the backup plan if they are not able to do that?
The point is, it's going back in. So he deserves to order. But also, both passion, the area to the sidewalk. But I know John and Chris have talked about today, they're going to push back on the contract. It needs to be done before next year. We're going to let it that successful enough.
Other questions, comments? Great. We'll go to the mayor's remarks, and I just want to say first off, I don't know that there's a another municipality in the state of New York that does Halloween as well as O'nean does. It's been actually a wonderful several days, and yesterday was, I think, very, very nicely done. So I want to shout out to Destination O'nean and to E P W and to SUNY O'nean and to Harvard and and all the folks that came downtown and enjoyed themselves the retailers and the restaurants were, you know, great participants. There's seemingly extra candy everywhere, but there were an awful lot of kids and their families enjoying Main Street yesterday in the parade. Is my favorite parade that happens in the city, O'nean, who would never parade that that folks on either side could just easily be in that parade for how entertaining they are as a good parade. So there's that. I also want to share with you this prepared piece. This is about the budget. So acknowledging the fact that the continuing escalation of costs in healthcare insurance and fuel equipment purchase, maintenance, and staffing will require a choice to either cut services or to finance in the short term through our general fund. And this, and that this is not a sustainable course. I'm going to inform the council of the following. At the May second meeting of the common council, I will make a presentation that will be dislocation of various strategies and a blueprint for the addition of one point two million dollars in new yearly revenues. These new revenue streams will be determined through conversation and planning with the city administrator and finance director, as well as with the leadership of our anchor institutions, the county, and the state. Through the course of these next six months, regular reporting of our progress will be made to the finance H R committee, who will be involved as partners in the process, and of course, to all council members and the public who choose to attend or view the meetings as they'll be archived. It is my hope and expectation that through this effort, we'll find ourselves in a better place during budget discussions next year and into the future. And that will include eight, eight seconds, the six months from today. Work is cut out. And that's it. So with that, we will move on to the incentive agenda. And motion number one, that the common council approved the minutes of the special meeting held October twenty fifth, twenty twenty two. Motion number two, that the common council approves the warrants totaling one hundred and sixty eight thousand, one hundred and sixty seven dollars and twenty eight cents. And that the same be placed on the director of finances desk for payment as presented. Motion number three, that the common council approves that the administrator's appointment of Gillian Hungerhurd to the position of civilian dispatcher collective November second, twenty twenty two at a base annual salary of thirty two thousand, four hundred and two dollars. C S E A grade six. His appointment is subject to the satisfaction of all applicable civil service requirements. Motion number four, that the counting council authorizes the merit to enter into an agreement with Permittium LLC of Pineville, North Carolina for the provision of an online vital records request application at no cost to the city. This agreement is subject to review by the city attorney and will renew annually until canceled. Motion number five, that the common council authorized the merit to execute a memorandum of agreement dated November one, twenty twenty two with the C S E A local one thousand past me, A F L C I O, city of Omiata, unit eight, one, zero, one, to extend a four day work week program for certain city staff and to shorten the advanced notice requirement for scheduled changes in certain circumstances. Motion number six, that the common council approves the budget transfers totaling two hundred and twenty one thousand dollars as presented for estimated fire overtime costs. And lastly, motion number seven, that the company council authorizes the director of finance to accept the gift in the amount of five hundred dollars from Marjorie Mersey to be restricted for the Wilbur Park Gate Improvement Project and further authorizes any necessary budget amendments for second seconds, which brings us to the end of the consent agenda. Are there any motions to be pulled yesterday? Six seconds, sorry. And do you have any others to be pulled? Okay, so with that, do I have a, I have a motion to approve by a second and a vote.
Aye.
Council member Davies?
Yes.
Council member Reisberger?
Yes.
Council member, what are your thoughts? Council member Gertrude?
Yes.
Council member?
Yes. Yes. Perfect. Now, motion number six. Yours, do we have a motion to approve? Emily, followed by.
Oh, okay.
Second, thank you. Very good. And it's all yours.
Yeah, so I just got a question regarding the level with this. I just kind of understand how the like. Well, yeah, so we're moving from personal care with overtime training, personal services and health insurance to the other free fund. Okay, so what is the impact of taking out almost seventy four thousand dollars from health insurance? So it seems like fixed costs, which is why I'm wondering like it's, it's how that will work.
It's because we budgeted for vacancies that have not been filled.
Okay.
So those funds are available.
Okay, excellent. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Aye.
Council member Davies?
Yes.
Council member Reisberger?
Yes.
Council member Gargen?
Aye.
Council member Gertrude?
Yes.
Council member Hal?
Yes. That takes us to discussion item. Motion number eight, that the common council adopts the following resolution, a resolution of the common council of the city of Omiata, New York, whereas the city of Omiata is submitting a request for a grant of funds to the N Y S D O T pursuant to section five, three, one, one, title forty nine, United States Code for a project to provide public mass transportation service for operations in the amount of four hundred and five thousand dollars for the twenty twenty two fiscal year and six hundred and ninety eight thousand dollars for the twenty twenty three fiscal year. And has committed the local share, whereas the city of Omiata and the state of New York have entered into continuing agreements or will enter into successor continuing agreements with authorizing the undertaking of the projects. And reimbursement of the federal and applicable state shares now therefore be it resolved that the mayor is authorized to act on behalf of the city of Omiata to sign the application and progress and complete the above named projects. Do I have a motion to approve? Mark Davies, followed by Emily. And discussion? Do we have any discussion? All right, then we'll take the vote.
Aye.
Council member Davies?
Yes.
Council member Reisberger?
Yes. Yeah. Yes. Wonderful. At this point, we're going to open up the, the four to budget discussion and we will then.
I'll go over to Jane just a second. Just a quick recap. Our focus of our discussion tonight, we have a one, as you know, that the fund that we were unable to balance in our initial presentation draft budget. Water and sewer fund, we were able to through cuts from the initial requests. So the balance of the budget for those, the plans running thirty, rates able to ten percent value increases will be presented under the fifty along with presented budget. We're not totally changing the rate structure at this time. The enterprise fund will be seen as all the balanced for money, money, using the Arizona. Genius, I think, reported last time that we participate in people care that funding the next two years, some people have to adopt it. General fund, that's a began around seven, six million dollars. We've now got that down to around one point one two million. We don't recommend any additional cuts to that in order to remain current level. To make any additional costs would, would exert or directions of some sort that we're not. Options to resolve that issue. Obviously, we can use the understrated on house. We have dinner fund. We have our book, second round funding that we have not yet admitted to anything that's on our discussion list tonight. And of course, the council who initially this summer directed us to assume going to the tax path. You could go to exceed the tax path to raise additional general fund private. Our recommendation ultimately at this point is to use the balance to pick, cover that balance with the undershipped balance. Yeah, with that, quick summary of that, so I go through the slides, talking about the height of your forecast.
Thank you, Greg. In, in front of you and also on the TVs for the presentation of the slides. What I've done is taken our general fund revenues and expenditures and I've projected them out through two thousand twenty eight. And so for the first slide, we'll be looking at the revenues. For the real property tax, what I did between that and the pilots is I estimated a two percent increase going through two thousand twenty eight. Sales tax, I was conservative and did a three percent increase for an estimate. And the fire contract with the town, I applied a one percent increase. Ambulance revenues, I applied a one percent increase. State aid, I applied a zero percent increase because I do not know if the state plans to raise the aim or not. We've had the same amount. We've talked about this before since two thousand eleven. And for the other revenues, it was a various percentages that would depend on the different area as far as what, what percentage I applied. So you will see that from the two thousand three tentative to the two thousand twenty eight, the annual increase of revenues ranges from about two hundred and ninety thousand up to three hundred and twelve thousand. Over that five year period, it raises revenues by almost one point five million dollars. And the graph will illustrate to you the, the different growth factors between the basically the five major areas being real property tax, sales tax, fire contract, email terms and state aid. Any questions on how I arrived at those numbers or?
Yes.
So with regards to our contract, when is that due?
The fire contract, the contract expires the end of two thousand twenty three. And Greg and I have been talking the past couple of weeks about meeting with the town to start negotiations.
So the number that we're seeing for the twenty three, that's automated.
That, that's already determined.
Correct. And then it was one percent after that was. And then you said you used three percent for sales tax?
Yes.
Thank you.
So Jay, I'm just curious how you arrived at the percentage. Is that kind of like historically looking back?
Yes, yes.
Was it kind of getting an average across that?
Yeah, I would, I would look back at history and I would also look at any type of change of activities. For example, the, we had the past, I want to say past last year, an issue, a great increase in sales tax. But I, I still don't feel that those numbers are stable. So I did not want to overestimate. And so I, I went back and I did basically, I would look at a ten year average. I would look at seven year, five year. And I would just look at the different analysis to figure out what I thought would be a good, a good estimate. You never want to overestimate your revenues. Because when you do, then you, you're bound to end up with a deficit in your revenues. And so you always want to be conservative in those areas.
But that kind of leads me into my last question. On other revenues, you show a decrease of approximately a hundred and fifty thousand between those years trending. Could you just tell us why you're decreasing that?
Sometimes it will depend on the area. So let me just look at the detail and I can tell you what area it was in. Oh, it's interfund transfers. It's, it's, I'm sorry, it was interfund transfers and that was because of excess bond proceeds. We will not have those in the anticipated numbers going forward.
Do you have questions?
The, the next slide is for the expenditures. And what we did is we broke this out between personal services, bridge benefits, operations, debt service and transfers, the other funds, basically to capital project funds. You will see that on the personal services, depending on the area. For public safety, I estimated three percent on all other departments. I reckon estimated a two percent increase. The reason being is because new hires go through steps and sometimes those steps have a greater salary adjustment. And so you will see that the, the personal services goes from seven million up to eight million over the five year period. Bridge benefits was a combination of percentages. Health insurance, I did a ten percent increase. I do not know if that will be realistic. The reason why I, normally I would do a five percent, but because we're giving that estimated twenty five percent this year, I thought that I should increase it to a ten percent number. Operations, I did basically a two percent on most of the categories. And debt service is actual, but going out into two thousand twenty six, you'll see that it jumps up quite a bit. I anticipated another debt issuance for different street projects by then. And so I added three hundred thousand to the debt service. And also, I just want to back up on the operations for a minute. Greg has mentioned to you that for us to maintain our equipment, the general fund really should be spending approximately a million dollars a year for different replacements or upgrades into our equipment. So what I did is I started out in a five hundred thousand figure and slowly worked it up to a million dollars by two thousand twenty eight. And then for the transfers right now, because our budget is so tight and we have been depending on our chips funding to have our local match for our street projects. We don't have any transfers to capital projects in, in the twenty two or the twenty two budget. So what we did in twenty four is we added three hundred thousand and increased it, oh no, and kept it three hundred thousand to two thousand twenty eight. We would like to make that an annual allocation. So it's expected. And we would also like to end up doing that also in the water and sewer funds as time goes on. So you will see that between the two thousand twenty three tentative and the projected two thousand twenty eight, the annual increases in expenditures range from eight hundred and ten thousand up to almost a million dollars or even two thousand twenty six, it's one point one million. The difference between what the revenues are projected to increase, this is what the expenditures are. And what I'd like to point out on the graph is the personal services which on, on your papers, blue on the, on the screen, it's orange and you will see how they increase. But please pay attention to the orange line, which is front and center plate. And you will see that by two thousand twenty eight, our fringe benefit number is almost the same as our salary number. Obviously, that is not sustainable. So we, we're going to have to look at our health insurance cost. Then the next slide is more of a summary of the anticipated revenue changes to the expenditure changes. And you will see that the orange graph, the orange line is an increase in expenditures. And the blue line is an increase in our revenues. So it's that gap that we need to concentrate on. And when you take the estimated revenues, the estimated expenditures, we have to apply that to our fund balance. Now, I know we've got a discussion, we've had discussions before of how much fund balance we should have on, on hand, how much we should restrict, how much we should unrestrict. And what I would like to do in this presentation is to show you how important our strong fund balance is to the city. And our fund balance policy is that we have thirty five percent of our annual expenditure budget to be reserved as, or, or to be on a sign for anticipation of unexpected expenditures or difficult situations that we need to get through. So if you look at this grid, the bottom section, which on the screen is much on your papers, blue, that shows the estimated deficits that we are anticipating through these projections. The red line on the screen, orange line on your paper, we start out with almost a fourteen million dollar fund balance. And as the years progress, we end up with a deficit of almost two point six million in our fund balance if nothing gets changed between now and two thousand twenty eight. The purple line in the center is our thirty five percent target to keep our unassigned fund balance. So you will see that by the time two thousand twenty five hits, we, those lines cross, which means we've had, we've exhausted our fund balance to our actual minimum of thirty five percent. So we don't want to get there. We want to make sure that our fund balance stays strong and we want to make sure that we don't continue to use our fund balance to balance our budget. So we have, Greg and I have discussed in detail a deficit reduction plan that we would like to just bring back here. We talked about this last year when we were talking about the two thousand twenty two budget. But as you know, we're currently in discussions with Fox Hospital for an ambulance transfer contract. We've also discussed implementing downtown paid parking. And as I said to you in the fringe benefit discussion, our health insurance has to be looked at to see what different options there are. Could it be a change in plan? Could it be a proportion with the county? Could it, you know, we, we just have several options that we need to look at. And obviously, these will all have to be negotiated with the unions. Lift assistance ambulance fee, this won't bring in much money, but one thing that the fire chief and I and Mohammed have talked about is that the ambulance gets called quite often for when somebody has like a life alert and chief, please correct me if I say something incorrectly. A life alert alarm and the ambulance will be called to the house to help the person get up from the floor or you know, if they, if they've got a, something that is not billable for the ambulance as far as a transport. So it's called a lift assistance charge. And it ranges from what Mohammed has told us between fifty dollars and three hundred and fifty dollars. The average collection on those is thirty eight dollars, but we thought that because the fire department's experienced in about five hundred of those calls a year that we thought it would be worth the council considering implementing a fifty to a hundred dollar fee for these lift assistance charges. that we thought it would be worth the council considering implementing uh a fifty to a hundred dollar fee for these lift assistance um charges. Um, the next thing that we would um like to uh look at is when the fire department becomes fully staffed, how it will reduce the overtime costs and what savings will we will realize from that. The stormwater usage fee, user fee, um Greg and I have been in contact with NICOM um as far as looking at the possibilities of implementing this for the city of Longmont. Uh, the aid increase, we've talked about how the state has not um adjusted our state revenue sharing since two thousand eleven. The mayor has um been in close contact with um people in Albany, uh with all of the municipalities trying to convince the state, we don't know if this is going to come, um but it's something that we want to keep pursuing, and um again, I've been communicating with NICOM directly with the contacts, and as she knows, to keep me up to date if there's any progress. Um, and then we also have talked before about the tax levy increasing over the cap, um those right now are, are immediate ideas that we are pursuing, um and uh and obviously, um we will continue to pursue different ideas, um that, these will take time, it's not something that's going to instantly happen, but we want to make sure that you know that we are um pursuing different ways to approach closing the deficit gap. Um, we, but I also want to point out that um our current, uh you know, the current request for the two thousand twenty-three budget um resulted in a six million dollar deficit. Take the fire truck out of there, and that brings it down to a four point five million. We, we cut it more than three and a half, uh well, we cut it down three point three million, to get it down to the one point one. So what, what I'm trying to say to you is that, we, not only do we need to increase our revenue sources, but we also need to figure out how we're going to fund the expenses that have already been cut, plus what our future expenses are going to be presenting to us. Um, so we have to look at operations, we have to look at um expense reductions. For example, this is small, but we're, we're looking at our telephone system. How can we change the telephone su- system to bring that cost down, those, all of those little things add up, but they do take some time. So this is part of the, um, this is also uh giving you a five-year forecast is also, it's a mandatory requirement for the council to have this information. Um, so do I, are there any questions?
And are you and the fire chief talked about um billing out for the, for the rescue, and that goes to more vehicle crashes? That's still billable, I?
That I'm not informed of, or?
So we tend occasionally to go returns for materials, you know, he's like to be to drive and stuff like that.
Okay, that I'm not informed, that's, I can't answer your question at this time, but we can investigate that.
Here is grain, uh, the lifting, yeah, thirty-one, sir, well, after rescue going out.
Yeah, sticking with the fire department, we're moving to a level that on the strategy for staffing to eliminate overtime or at least decrease it.
Well, for right, right now, um uh what we're looking at, the current budget has um the current budget proposal, well, you know, even in two thousand twenty-two, but also in two thousand twenty-three, we have budgeted for four, seven firefighter crews. And um if we get the Fox Hospital contract, and also hopefully if we get the safer grant, if we increase that to eight man crews, um or I should say eight firefighter crews, um then that will uh allow the chief to have enough coverage on one shift, where he won't have to be calling in for coverage when there's someone else. So depending on how the crews are structured, will depend on how much um callback time we will have have to do, and also scheduling for um their contractual leave on.
Okay, so that's contingent on the Fox Hospital.
Well, it's contingent on a, a number of things, uh uh will we be able to build a part-time staff? You know, um, so there, there's different strategies that we can uh use in the approach, um but that is a goal, not only for the cost to the city, but also for um the relief of the current fighter fighters and the number of hours that they're working.
Yeah, which is really concerning. Um, one thing that had been mentioned to me is changing the structure of the responses to EMS um setting out like for um I don't remember what the terminology is, and maybe the experts on that side of the table could help me, but calls that are less serious, having two people on the ambulance rather than three. And I just wondered if that had been uh discussed at all, or what your thoughts are on that. Um, because I think that that ends up leaving someone else in the station if there's like a fire call. So I just wondered, sorry.
So.
Like very well, this is that, I make careful.
So I've talked about this before quite a bit, actually, um when we're kind of an anomaly here in City of Longmont, so any like commercial service that is around us, they send two people on an ambulance, but they also have the volunteer uh people within those departments to come and assist with the lifting portion and everything. We don't have any of that built into the area, so like we don't have a volunteer staff to come and assist, so we've got to go up long flights of stairs and stuff to get these patients and then be able to bring them down to the ambulance, and to operate the stretcher, that's two people alone. So we would theoretically have to abandon a patient to bring a stretcher and get a stretcher into a person, or potentially it would take a lot longer time if we brought the stretcher in with all of our stuff to get it to that individual. So to make us the most efficient and most effective and get us back in service in the quickest amount of time, that three-person crew is just the most efficient way.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, come on, Mark. All right. So I, I don't have a question much of a comment, perhaps, very beginning with you and in general as well. I mean, it seems that I spent this weekend looking at this frankly, because you know, I can't imagine more looking at this, I wish it would be like, it's it's really difficult to look at recognizing the cost that we have. And the health insurance is what I kind of lean on is, and Jenny, we know that the graphs in terms of some of the expenses, it's not growing. So I was really kind of trying to dig on that, and began to kind of stumble across proactive approaches, the health care, I'm putting this out there as, as something I think we need to begin to investigate, it's not going to fix it right now. But I think we need to look at some long-term kind of proactive approaches with kind of employee health programs um and plans. I was able to find um a report, uh CDC did an examination of fifty-six different studies, and the conclusion was based on all that evidence that employee health plans can lower healthcare costs by twenty-five percent. Um, because of, you know, just by different kind of incentivized programs, so I, to me, I think I don't want to look at, let's look at reducing what we have, but can we kind of tighten down our approach to, to our employees, perhaps our retirees as well, and have some proactive approaches to work folks around some of the high um the items that most impact people, um blood pressure, high cholesterol, heart disease types of issues is probably the number one thing, is probably jacks up a lot of different things. We have programs to address that, uh other things that we might know that are commonalities. Um, I guess I would like to see us try to begin to actively work towards that, and whatever that might look like. But I just feel like that's, that's the low-making proof that we can begin to address. It doesn't address it right now, but maybe it begins to address it five years from now, and I think that's what we need to have the biggest impact.
Uh, just to follow up on that, Mark, um our, our current health carrier excellence does have a lot of hallmark, uh telehealth care for the um employees, and they do have different health programs. And we um our brokers will send out information to all of our employees to update them on their options. We have been encouraging them to per- uh participate, we've had different growths in different areas, just not as much as we would like. Um, and so that is something that we're pursuing, also our health brokers are investigating different options for us um to see what's out there. Greg and I will be, we're uh meeting with the county um to discuss developing a consortium to see if that's actually an option. So we are exploring many different options, but obviously, it all needs to get negotiated with the unions uh before anything can get approved. Um, but um, you know, when, you've heard me talk about how I don't like percentage raises, I don't like to apply percentages to numbers, because it just depends on the math as far as what the result comes up with, that's why I like to look at dollars. So when you take a percentage, if you take twenty-five percent and apply it to a three million dollar bill, that's huge. Um, you know, so it's when they say twenty-five percent, and I want to know twenty-five percent of what number. So when, but when you take that to our health insurance bill, as I said to you before, that was like over almost five hundred thousand dollars just for the general fund. So um, so when we look at those, and I said, I think I said to you before, if we realized the fifteen percent increase, the decrease this year, instead of a fifteen percent increase that we have in the budget, it would be almost eight hundred thousand dollars difference. So the, the health insurance costs are huge right now, and I just see them growing, um also in the audit of financials, Jonathan talked about the OPEM, right now, our OPEM liability, which is our um other post-employment benefits, which is our retiree bill, that by now that estimate is forty-five million dollars. I think it's forty-five or forty-eight, I'd have to refresh my, my number. But that's huge, and what they do is they take our current retirees and our actives, and they, they do an estimate for how long they think they're going to live and what the rates are going to do, and you know, what that's going to end up costing the city over the, the long term. So the number's huge, and it's really something that we do have to work on.
Great, well, can I, I'm sorry, my apologies, I didn't want to thank you for the consortium, I did, one of the other things I was wondering if we've explored consortiums and, and whether like this.
Katie was looking into that pre-COVID, um Katie and Greg are looking into that pre-COVID, but then COVID happened and everything kind of just um stopped. And then also the county administrator has changed, um but from what I understand, the new county administrator is very familiar.
Right, great, thank you.
So Mark, I've been lagging on the county and Jenny was just saying with regards to the health consortium, because I was participating in that on two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty. Um, so the, the city and the county are definitely in sync on the healthcare consortium, it's just matter of time, they should still only believe Mark's on that. If you need to actively be engaged, it'd still take probably two to three years to get it up and running. Then it takes another two to three to start seeing that level, and also, your thought process, it's definitely a five or six-year um for March, or any of that could come into fruition.
But just to clarify what you just said, so there is interest?
Oh, there's, there's a blue pack, I don't even, you know, as a, as a legislator. Um, we've gone as far as we have a contractor in place that will take us through that process, so it's moving forward, it's just as Jenny said, and previous folks that were sitting chairs moved around, and so it's kind of lagged it off. Even in this state, um there's this uh understanding of the need for this municipalities, and that is getting with our, our senator, you know, he's certainly supportive of, well, so there's, there's a lot of uh of push to make this happen, it's just unfortunate, I guess, it would have needed, or if we could join into the under-education consortiums. Our local schools already have this in place, but there's legislation that prohibits municipalities from getting into that consortium, it's, yeah, it's frustrating.
Well, they, I'm sorry, can I add to that? And from what I understand, the preempt, uh, it's because of our public safety. They don't want to put law enforcement and firefighters in the same group as their own teachers. Um, that, that is what I was just. I think it's because of the nature of the job. Um, and that's why I've been told, I don't know if that's what you're, I'm done.
Out of all, but yeah, I want, we just pulled out a legislation that wouldn't allow us to switch over, because there's some very large on educational consortiums that we could pop into, but without lots of, so.
Unless the state changes the law.
But I'm definitely putting your name off to be the laser of the healthcare consortium.
Right.
And I did talk with Alan Muckels last week, who's the treasurer of Seville County, and he's very much interested in, I, Greg and I have been to meet with them next week or the week after.
And if I could, one more thing, sorry, this is the topic, I think this is our, this is, if we can address the, give us a lot, right? So my apologies, Mayor, to suggest to you anything about your decision, but I think this is one of those places where you can use your influence at the state level, so this needs to be a statewide conversation. Uh, why we as municipalities are comparing the front of us, um this is, this is problematic, so again, my apologies for telling you, John.
We're, we're, we're much on the same page in the conversations that they alluded to, you know, referencing the center of those, those conversations we're in now.
Excellent.
Uh, appreciate that, Governor.
Thank you.
And as a bigger, like, on the smaller municipalities.
Absolutely.
Um, they're seeing twenty-five to thirty percent difference in their healthcare, uh healthcare costs versus leaders, they actually have no idea what's going to happen, so just give me, I think they're going to it's very frustrating to be a small.
Right, and, and nor is that something that frankly, I think we want to get cutting on, because as we talked about, that's one of those kind of fringe benefit incentives that gets good employees here, right? You start cutting back on that, we have a negative impact on, on our city that's you guys were serving five years, so I think we need to really figure out some proactive and positive ways of, right? My apologies, I shut up, but I was really, nothing that we've done, but just how this is affecting.
Okay, cool, this is, uh, four, four years ago, we could save two million dollars a year, and I see your county healthcare costs. Four years ago, it stayed out.
Let's not say that four years from now, man.
When did you?
We also checked in, we get down to another county that had it, but there's also rules about jumping over counties, thinking it's under counties. Because we actually tried that too. You can see what I'm going, what I was hearing, okay?
Probably handcuffing that, right?
Yeah, there, you can see, we, we, you're only handcuffs, that's half the issues, how do we do the handcuffs, so always got to change the income, I'll see.
With the various.
So my question would be the projections, the analytics, and really potential revenue sources. Have you put anything on paper as a matter of the group, sure.
I, I didn't print out, I didn't print out the detail tonight, because I just thought it was too much paper, so I will be sending it to you the email. And just so you know, also in that, I go back, I think to two thousand fourteen to show you the actuals, and then I, I bring you up. Um today, and then the projections that you guys are coming.
It would just be in our, since twenty twenty-five, really our first pass, you can see what you're projecting, I'll hear you.
Greg, you might be able to answer this if you can, that's, that's fine. How many of these things that we have cut from this budget have we just kicking down the road for the last few years?
Can't say specifically, but definitely there are things, especially the equipment that, you know, we're here to talk about. Pushing things off, um like Jane mentions, you know, our analysis of our fleet. They, they need to spend a million dollars per year on average out of the general fund in order to maintain our fleet. You know, that hasn't been going down, we've spent quite a bit of the general fund in the last decade, but it still hasn't averaged quite that much. I think we had two hundred fifty thousand roughly in the budget this year in the general fund for equipment. So we're just not there at this time, so one area, uh, interest capital projects, that's general fund, budget, money being spent on street finance essentially, or other facility projects, whatever. Uh, we haven't said anything the last few years. Even sending, for all of our street purpose needs, our state funding. Fortunate, Jane mentioned you more, received the additional southern for without, the last two years, fifteen year program, and hadn't existed previously, but no idea how long that might last, I don't expect it to last forever. I don't know, that's a safe, sort of something. Or intended, but those are, those are things that as, as you know, in broader discussions with the President, I would achieve a little service decisions, we're not doing like stormwater or a broken, pretty shake, that was the council's feeling, but there are lots of things that were just not able to do. Uh, the eventual.
So now that we've announced the budget where we're at, I want to ask a question again, is this the year that we should go over the tax cap? I'm just kidding, the general, yeah, it's just a general, it doesn't even need to have an answer, but I'm just thinking like, you know, we have drawn and if we're trying to get to that five-year mark, where next year you started a higher base rate, your taxes on top, it's a com- compounding thing. Is this the year that we really need to look at, well, we're at tax cap, because I don't know how much more we can push things down well before we start getting into some serious, serious trouble.
But Jenny, um knowing that the tax cap says a two percent, you can tell us um what two percent would get us, and um we can extrapolate from that what an additional percent would do, obviously. Uh, to Scott's point, we're talking about compounding, uh, year after year, so. Coming in at a lower number now has an effect. Uh, on the future, because those numbers aren't compounding, however, it's still. It's still money, uh, to be asked of our citizenry, so what is two percent to us, and we can extrapolate from that.
Well, the, the, to, the, hitting the cap, tax cap. For two thousand twenty-three, we were able to raise a little over a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars in taxes. Now, what's going to affect our taxes next year is the pilot agreement is going to kick in for the uh laws on deep strip. And so that will go towards our tax cap, and. Um, so what I would, my suggestion, and this is just my own personal suggestion. Due to the current rate of inflation. We're going to be increasing the water and sewer by ten percent, we're going to increase the minimum by ten dollars, and then the tables by ten percent. Then we're also going to be going to the tax cap. And considering the rate of inflation, um, I think going over the tax cap for two thousand twenty-three. Uh, should be postponed until the two thousand twenty-four budget, only to let the economy settle. Um, and. Uh, but that's my recommendation, only because I know how it's going to affect the homeowner. With everything else that's being increased. If it was a normal year, with, with, you know. Gas prices being at their normal level, inflation being at the normal growth. Um, because inflation, I've got a history of the inflation numbers. For the past number of years, I think the average has been like one point nine four percent. Uh, so this is an anomaly. And it will be settled, like just as of time, and. And I've read and listened to a lot of economic reports on it, it's due to the COVID. Due to the shortage of supplies because of the pandemic. And the shutdowns, and a lot of it's due to the, to the war in Ukraine. It's a global thing, we've got an eight percent of. Rate of costly living increase here in the United States, other countries have an eighty-three percent. Cost of living is. So it's, it's global, it's not just the United States, it's just not the Northeast, so. Eh eh, because all of these different things have, have globally affected so many of different things in the market. And, for example, the chips, the cars, and, you know, all those different things, so it's, it's not an easy. Um, e- easy explanation, but that's from what I have read. Um, that's how I sum it up quickly, um, but that would be my recommendation. Is to go to the tax cap this year, then reconsider it for next year, only because of how it will affect the homeowners.
And the discussion on this, any other. Other thoughts that you want to bring to discussion? Yes, someone.
Um, first of all, I just want to say thank you again so much for putting all of this documentation together, it really took a really long time, it's very detailed, thank you. Um, one thing I wanted to maybe bring up as far as uh part of our deficit, deficit reduction strategies. Uh, years ago, there was proposed or implemented a student uh public safety fee that. Um, would be paid by every student, it could be, you know, even a nominal amount, fifty to a hundred dollars, it could generate a lot of revenue.
That's, that's unconstitutional. It's illegal. I can't sing a lot of certain proportion of the, of the population taxed.
I don't, well, it was. I think it has to be supported by the state in order to go through, it's something that everyone's.
The grants from the state to compensate. Us, uh, I have a project program with SUNY, the other SUNY campuses, very dollar amounts were allocated. To the city of O'Leanna and Portland, and other cities that had, had students to compensate us, because all the city facilities. Excuse me, the state facilities were non-taxable. Uh, but the students have an impact. On us, but we have no authority to do that, we can talk to our legislators. And ask them to see if they can get it happen, but we can't, we can't tax any particular portion of the population.
Thank you, I do realize that, but I was wondering if it's something that perhaps we could advocate for on a state level.
Um, I, ju- just, you know, I did follow up with Nikon yesterday on that exact question. And it was confirmed that any type of student fee for a public safety to be shared with the city. Needs to be instituted by SUNY itself, SUNY would collect the money. And then SUNY would share it with the municipalities, so, and it has to be done at the state level, and it's not something that we can individually. Um, negotiate with uh the college, it has to go through SUNY itself.
Okay.
So that would be something that, again, the mayor could investigate um at the. You know, the conference of mayors, uh, and I also did confirm with Nikon that they don't know of any. Uh, SUNY campus in the state of New York that is implementing any type of uh safety public, a public safety fee.
Thank you, yeah, um, I mean, I can see it not only helping O'Leanna, but. I don't know if there's any, you know, me, so I just, I just thought I would.
And we're, my opinion where that should happen is at the state level in our aim formula. Um, they, you know, when, when they restructure the formula, if they ever do restructure the formula. If they could take into consideration for municipalities that um do host SUNY settings. Um, then we could get some extra. Extra aid from there. Uh, on the counter of that, um, and I don't know if it was this council or the prior council, um, I had written. An email to the councils in um, uh, um. Encountering a report that was presented, I think it was this council. Um, I asked for the economic. Um, impact of having this, the colleges here in O'Leanna. Um, and when you counter all of the, if COVID proved anything, it's, it proved how important the colleges are through the O'Leanna's existence. And the revenue funds for, for, or the revenue sources for every fund. Uh, because when the college students are not here, you, we saw our revenues on point, so. So it, there's a balance.
And you've always pointed out the water and sewer funds, um, along with sewer fees that, that the institutions pay, it's certainly. They're not free riders.
So, um, and I, I'm sorry, I'm not implying that at all. So it, it's, um, yeah, but, but it is something to pursue, um, because I, I think the mayor is very well aware of it.
So, take that up a little, I was saying, and you were talking to Nikon. Are they saying it would have to be SUNY, why, or that each individual SUNY could make that individual decision?
No, the individual colleges cannot do it, the, the SUNY institution itself has.
Suggest everybody play a couple of the Powerball and get something back to city dude then.
Don't laugh, Mark, I've been doing that.
Further discussion on the subject? Our next section? Well, the, the next step in the process is November fifteenth, that council will break the budget, if there are any changes that. That like us to make, does mean how we're gonna do that, if you'd like us to show. You know, balancing the general fund, using unrestricted fund balance.
This is, I thought that was kind of our homework for this meeting, wasn't it, to give you a thumbs up to. For the short. Yeah.
Yeah. If, if we're ready to agree on that, then we'll go forward and finalize the budget, but the, the full package here.
I mean, I don't really see much. Where, where are you gonna cut, what are you gonna do with it? Yeah, you know, not a really good alternative.
Yeah. Yeah, restricted fund balance, raise the tax gap, the bulk of the tax cap, use our funds, which else?
I kind of like, I kind of like you, I know art is supposed to be a separate discussion, but I kind of like art. As to get the project stuff, we wouldn't normally be able to fund, normally be able to do something, try to keep that out. Take your money from there and put it to. Try to balance this budget, that just means.
So we can, um, we can look at this on the fifteenth, or we can.
Yeah.
I guess, let me clarify, I'd like to have interaction now, so that we can repair the ten, but.
Kind of Scott, I mean, I, I spent the weekend looking through this, and I also want to echo everyone's thanks to everyone for preparing this, it was very thorough and. Wasn't anything that was really glaringly gonna get us the reduction of. Without impacting things. You can take away this or that, but all of this or that is linked to a full of services. We are where we are, and I, I think we do need to have some long-term plan, which is why I was trying. Health insurance, all the pieces.
So is it safe to say that we have a consensus that will allow you to repair this whole budget with fifty? All right, then we'll close this discussion and move on to our. And so. Greg, I guess I'm gonna ask you to. What's the net spend so far in three pack up? What are houses, so we've spent on the new apartment electric infrastructure improvements, he's doing much, he's spending eighty three thousand dollars. On the new apartment, it's paid to athletes, we spent sixty thousand, one hundred ninety seven thousand dollars. I have our, but also then fifty thousand that is donated by ILOF, and seven thousand three hundred. On the revenues. Round one, twenty twenty-one, our lot, and we had. Your March, two hundred thirty-five thousand, video of our county creation. Fifty thousand people who were over the trail, bridge or what it's meant. With no. That's the end, it's now fifteen thousand dollars, now that we. Actually, we've done it from subject to time, and got some. In charge of SMS. Uh, we had donated sixty thousand for U L Park basketball. Forty thousand for U L Park's gatefront rehabilitation. Recent conversation. Committee meeting was that we'd love to do some initial. The dinner operating budget. Did all us identify, maybe probably plan for a bigger project in the future, where they did that's, that's true.
I have identified someone, and people, I, I went out, filled everything, and people can give you a response back to the question, hopefully be able to hear.
Um, and then we had, uh, twelve thirteen thousand dollars, it was kind of hanging out there for new apartment, I side walk. Purvis, so originally, we first discussed our, but that was. Johnny's one hundred seventy-five thousand dollars, we've adjusted everything to. Uh, to, to pay for actual costs, so.
There's no sidewalks.
Uh, I'm sorry, new apartment being drives, so. There was change toward the map, it comes about, our city, it turns into a slower drive, and turns its, my place, so basically along the bond, there's no sidewalk now. All the way back to, uh, from the former gas.
Yeah, I mean, get a lot of, uh, people that walk, or ask if you get sidewalks and then.
So Greg, that's the first tranche.
I'm sorry, before you move on, could you just tell us what the score was again, seven hundred?
Well, yeah, seven hundred thirteen thousand, one hundred seventy.
Okay, thank you.
Is. Each, each traction. And the second we've allocated to. Not yet, not yet, the discussion was speaking generally, possibly, did they need that first contact? About this, we talked over street watering, those projects. For next year. Potentially. But we never really had a detailed discussion about that.
Yeah, and then we also have the thirty thousand dollars from the.
Right, that's gonna, you can use this, like, over park, for instance, placing or researching that, what we're never allowed that, and moves. Um, laying is already there. Hopefully, we'll be able to spend about ten thousand dollars on playground, being accessible within. Uh, maybe the shade structures, and then also repairing the panel by space in the lower part, whatever that might entail. To determine exactly, but kind of all, or. There's some research being done, that'll.
Can I just make a comment on that? Okay, thanks, I wrote something out, um, so I guess you can move it with me. Um, so I didn't really want to die on this hill, but, um. This has just been feeling really, you know, I have a toddler, so icky to me, and I wanted to. You know, dig into that a little bit and try to figure out why exactly, um, I think this is the kind of thing that before I was on council, I would. Read out and have some feelings about, and kind of go like. Sunday, I'm gonna run for council, man, and so, since I'm here, and I'm at the table, like, I should just take a second and say my piece about it. Um, so, obviously, we received a lot of feedback about this, uh, after the decision was made. Uh, at a meeting within, you know, twenty minutes to take down the new specs, and it's been. Um, rescinded, um, I've heard a lot from people who are not my constituents, and a lot of people who are my constituents. Um, and I appreciate that folks reached out to me because it helps me to hear different perspectives and spill out my perspective. On it, um, I think that overwhelming response, and it kind of reaffirmed the way that I feel is, um. Ultimately is empathy toward the neighbors of this facility. Um, in the fourth ward, we absolutely empathize with. The status of your backyard cheating, like overnight, depending on who buys the house next to you, in fact, I've had people say to me. Um. I feel like, you know, if my neighbor moves, I'm gonna have to buy the house next to me, so I, so I can control what's going on over there. Um, so we can definitely empathize with that, and, you know, when, when something like that happens. In our neighborhood, the line that gets repeated to people in Center City is like, go over and introduce yourself, make friends. Tell them that you have, you know, a three-year-old, or that you don't have to get to work in the morning. Um, which is not a bad idea, uh, or to call the police, those are the options, um, you know, and just like kids playing basketball. The basketball court students who are at house party are just doing what they do in college, you know, so. I think that that argument is also very reasonable, um. I certainly don't blame the Adidas, um, or anyone on the street who truly felt proud enough by this decision. That they signed a petition. Uh, because they organized, they participated in the system, they did exactly what we want people to do. When they experience a problem with something that has happened to them. The city government, uh, I also don't, you know, have any hard feelings for the city that council made, I think that, you know, someone came in front of us, presented pretty. You know, it felt like a compelling argument in the moment, they presented a problem, and it's human nature to want to fix that. Um, I think that one thing that hasn't really been addressed is that the Parks and Recreation also did what it was supposed to do. Uh, they took an underutilized facility and made it vital again. The court went through all of the appropriate processes and steps. It was approved by two separate commission memberships and council memberships. Uh, parks has heard and deliberated over this for over two years. I know that they have given it thought, and that all sides of the argument have been presented. Uh, you guys should know that we have Union Street resident, comments of petitioner, co-parks meeting, who was for the court. And also currently being street resident, sits on the Parks and Recreation Commission. Uh, they have since made the recommendations to beat the court where it is. And I see no reason to publicly undermine that decision. I think we need to remember that we represent everyone who lives in the city, not just a vocal handful of individuals. It's a public park, we publish facilities, basketball is in appropriate use in the park. And clearly, there's a decent portion of our constituency that wants it there. This facility is close to a neighborhood, and that means that we have to work a little bit harder to make sure that the park is a good neighbor. I think that Parks and Rec, and then Click, and Legislative Committee should absolutely review. The noise ordinance in effect, and the parks committee, and to make sure that they're meeting the ongoing needs of the community. I think it's perfectly appropriate, their signs to be posted, as they have, that indicate that there are little ears listening. And spelling out people's little ordinances, and defining a decimal level that is too loud for music, if we allow music at all. These have been done in other cities to help block the whole neighborhoods coexist. We could continue to explore a visual or sound barrier, I also have a suggestion from a few really well-respected and. Uh, you know, credential members of the community. Uh, you know, credential members of the community that we can host a community conversation at the court and actually. Bring people together, facilitate healthy relationships. Um. And I think that's it for me. The reason why this isn't sitting right is because. It's kind of an anti neighborhood decision, uh, neighborhoods are about learning to live together, appreciating one another and respecting each other. And this is an opportunity for us to create community instead of pushing us farther apart, literally. And then we can use that fifty thousand dollars on the items that we identified here tonight. That benefit the entire community. While we wait for the master plan to come forward from Parks and Rec. Which is forthcoming and is part of the established process. So I just appreciate hearing the glory for competence and uh, I hope they will consider my comments. Thank you.
Additional discussion?
Yeah, oh, I have something. Yeah, um, I think, you know, we're talking about projects that benefit the entire community, one thing that is not on this list. Because it's not really a perk thing, it's kind of a perk thing, it's not really a perk thing. But I think there's this consensus that we like to expand our community gardens. Um, and so I wanted to just throw that on the table. By the light balloon and say, you know, what do we think about maybe rethinking the items that are on here? I'm I'm curious if anybody had any other thoughts about. These projects and and terms of, you know, they're where we really follow the priority list and. I wanna see what people thought about maybe using this as an opportunity to expand those.
But. First off, I just wanna say thank you for taking that much time and effort into what you prepared for us to to listen to. But I also want to check and public to understand that that night that this council made a decision wasn't the first time we'd heard that, in fact, if I remember correctly. Um, I believe. Council member Dave brought it up two or three other times, either in council or in committees or the combination thereof. I know that I'm sure like everybody here has had that answer. To constituents or just folks in general about that and. You bring up a good point, um, of maybe suggesting having a uh, neighborhood meeting and and trying to get all the parties there at the table, but at the end of the day, you're right. There's now little people's ears that are looking into the words that were being said on the court, but it's also adults. And you're right, the neighborhood should. Maybe adjust a little bit, but also the folks that are using those facilities should adjust. And 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 I think you bring up a couple of good points, it's uh, maybe a little bit about enforcement. And that's where the noise ordinance and the words that are being used. Um, need to be identified, and so that puts, you know, obviously more work on city staff, whether it's in the co. Co enforcement office and where the police department. Um, he can for that. Okay. Yeah, um. I do wanna point out a few things regarding that. That decision, um, first, there was a sign that was originally posted there regarding noise. And that was brought to the council telling us that's wrong and needed to be brought down, so. Um. I do believe there's a difference between, I mean, I have neighbors in my enemy where there's noise all the time, so I understand about noise. Uh, the difference between. Uh, either somebody buying a house next door that's noisy and students or students that change over every year that are noisy next to you. That's one thing, you can go and talk to them and let's talk to them every year. But when you're talking about living up against the park, it's it's gonna be a transient population every day, every hour, it's gonna change anyway. And so I think having to go and talk with people on a basketball court is also. Or a tennis court or wherever you're going is it's, I don't know that it's gonna be a realistic solution. Um. When there's a noise issue. Um, I think the sign is a better solution for that. Um. We did. Decide, I wanna remind everybody that. We did decide quite a while ago it was gonna be a family play place. With basketball nets there, not a basketball court. Like in the upper park, so there is a difference between the two, and I think we've gotten from that. Uh, the only difference is we didn't put lines down like on a basketball court. And we didn't, even though we wanted a family play place, we haven't included anything else yet. That was the intent. Um, and lastly, uh, I just wanna remind everybody that just like. Most of our commissions, um, except for uh. Uh, planning commission, zoning board. Uh, of service, there's a few of them. Um. Parts and records commission that I I give them a lot of credit for the work they do, they they do a lot of, they do the humans work here. Uh, but their job is to recommend to the council and like any other board or commission. Um, the council can either take that recommendation or improve improve it, but. It's also possible that the council will not approve something or. Um, will discuss it and find that they are condoning her, but I mean, that's just the nature of these, unfortunately, so. As I saw. So a couple of things that I'd like to see if I can get resolved, one is that the county offer money that we. Requested and has been. Wanted to us is specifically. Who are request designated for the reconstruction, rehabilitation of the upper corporate part. Basketball court and those sort of things that you listed out, which will certainly make. Um, thing a nicer and more connected part of both. Where everybody, especially those folks that. Like basketball. Um. So there's that, the the thing that I would like to see if I get some um. Answer to is relative to the largest piece that's still. Uh, in the um, the first tranche of the ARPA monies that we have designated for the park. And that's the um, the best end. Um, several people, maybe all of you, I think, are aware that I had a. Um, a conversation with uh. An active community member who um, said we can do that, we can build that. And uh. What he wound up putting together a an ad hoc committee. Which. Way to go, um, with the idea of not only providing this council with some plans and strategies and prices. And so, but also. Um, because there are monies that are already being targeted and in fact, even have been collected. Uh, for a stage. Where it may be, um, that. Is still in this group's feeling, um, and and my feeling, as an uneducated as it may be. Is that between those monies and the two hundred thirty five thousand dollars is designated, we may very well be uh. Two best and one of some consequence in size in the park and another one's smaller that would accommodate half a dozen. Folks uh, performing, uh, that would be back movable uh, in motor plaza. And uh, they've done some nice work, they've only met once and I and I um, talked with these folks a couple of times. And they would like to know, can we meet again? There's no cost to the city for this, they they simply want to present the city with with options. Uh, and prices and strategies. And uh, and I don't want to tell them yes or no until I know that this council is approving of that two hundred thirty five thousand dollars.
Oh, we go, so I think one thing that I would really like to say, and I can express this to you personally, is that I'd love to see the opportunity for us to hold. Um, somewhere, so for me, you know, that was something that would expand what we're able to offer. Um. Yeah, I mean, obviously, I think, you know, we wanna be our last user in our community, that investing in those things is. Is literally the very first step, so. Um. Yeah, I mean, I think in terms of it needing parts of the whole. Um, what would that invest? Does that make sense? We did seven thirteen and we spent. Hundred and seventy five. That would be nap in their head.
That's true.
Um, yeah, so. Oh, right, I'm sorry, two seventy. Two, okay. Point one, so we have about four hundred. Left, is that right?
Out of my first.
Yeah. Four thirty, so that's like half. Of what we have left with hundred stretch, just to put it in perspective.
Yes, we've been talking about performance stages for ten years now. So. Um. I think if we don't do this now, I don't know when we would do it. So I'm in favor of that.
Other questions on council?
Yes.
Um, two things, one with the with the artists of being standard, I would uh. I'm always open that, at least get a budget. So we want to bring a price through, so we kind of know what we're looking at, that's never gonna hurt, um. But the second thing is more of to go back to what Katie was saying, um. With the night that that with the basketball court. The one thing that I I don't know if we, you you kind of set to census and I my mind wasn't even made up yet that night. And I would just ask like, uh, maybe a major thing like that, even though we wouldn't necessarily have to vote on it, maybe we should vote on it so that. You know, people know kind of like where we stand, because I got a lot of. Phone calls from down my area, and I'm like, well, I wasn't. Or against, I was still trying to figure out and listening. It wasn't, you know. So, I mean, just something to think about, I'm not saying anything was wrong or anything was. I probably wouldn't have known right up until you called my name, you know, I mean, I'd like to support. My total orders, but it was just, you know.
I think that's very valid, um, I watched it, probably most council members did. Uh, the R car video and uh, and as. Uh, I watched that and looked around the dais and to see people's reactions, um. In retrospect, you know, Monday morning quarterbacking my own chairing of this uh, of this council. I thought, you know, I might have pulled that trigger a little bit prematurely. So that's, uh, I think it's a reasonable critique and I appreciate that, and we will. Endeavor to do there. Um, anything else um, that we. Need to discuss, it sounds like, I hate to mean past, but it sounds like. We may have consensus that I may be able to yes mark.
Well, we may have consensus, I would like to just suggest that we don't have a blank check of two thirty five, but we have consensus on a the performance stage and. If they can bring that in lower than that two thirty five, that would open up opportunities elsewhere, I think we have consensus on performance stage.
Yeah, I think the best, that's terrific, it allows me to let these folks continue the process, they'll remember us. Yes, Jim.
I'm sorry, I just wanna remind the council that. We're building the stage, we will have to do competition, um, we'll have to grow.
Sure.
For bid, um, so the criteria will be there.
It's nice to, the community's frankly volunteered and. To to assistance process provides with information that I I find that incredible.
It's just that, um. I just wanted to remind everyone.
Even if they start volunteering, if this particular group goes out and gets volunteers that are willing to. To put their labor, to volunteer their labor to build the two sound stages, we would have to go this that.
I will, it's, I will have to, I'll probably have to uh, refer to Big Merzick's guidance on uh, volunteering. And because we have to look, we could accept donations. Um. Um.
Well, monetary could supply.
But for a project that's over two hundred thousand dollars or close to it, I I wanna just make sure, because I'm gonna have to report. Back to the United States Treasury.
For the use of.
Yes, and I have to guarantee that all procurement was followed properly, so I just wanna, I just wanna get my ducks in a row.
I'm only saying this because I think material costs are gonna come in much higher than two hundred and forty thousand dollars, and if we can accept labor. Um, I think it would help make this project. They are also, as I mentioned, um. Because they were looking at, there are there are two um. Individuals that are only onto icons that are um, the intention is to honor each of them, one is. Uh, Jeff Walker, the other one is Al Yeludora, and in the former case, this already quite a bit of money this that's already being. Uh, contributed and um, and that's gonna help.
So in the meantime, while they're working on that, I'll work on, you know. What I, what we have to do to follow the donation of the labor and. If this, if the city.
Yes, you get that's a question.
And so, well.
Depending on how it's. And that's how it's shaped, how it's maintained, how it's how it's allocated. We may be. Will, I'm, they said, I'm just asking, can I let them continue the process of trying to determine, you know, costs of the new strategies? And I feel like if I've gotten. An answer that that's yes, I can continue to, I can ask them to continue that volunteer register. Perfect, do we have any further discussion on ARPA or are we set? Okay, I'm gonna. Very slowly going around the dice, so I'm gonna say that we're set. Okay, so. Set set in the sense that. Set in the sense that we are on a list of projects, that's our, your projects, if our priority or. I guess for for my trajectory, more like a trail bridge, that's something that we've got previous been on. We can plan to move forward with that, construct that in twenty twenty three. You know, are we are we ready to move forward with that project? Um. And then what about everyone, so are we doing anything with those? Let's put two trails together, right? Basically, you bridge there with the upper, upper over lake. Um. That's green by a path, there's no bridge anymore, it's all part. Once you're good, Longyover.
Yeah, there's a, there's some, there's. Not me.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
You're not recommending it, are you?
No, we're not recommending it.
Um, so yeah, so that's what's next, the local bridge in terms of, because you have like great ease, right?
Yeah, we put that in our. Our quarter, we're gonna go through one. Number one.
Okay. Um, yeah, I mean, I, like I said, I I wanted to throw the idea of expanding our community garden in there, maybe instead of. Relocating the basketball court in New York or. You know, I don't know what the plan is with the White House State Park, I know we're not gonna have that many two sidewalks in New York, and we wanna move that higher on the list. Um. Yeah, I feel like there's more discussion there in my mind, but those two projects, I would feel free to throw it out. That were really rich and best stage.
I thought I was just moving forward on stage for this. At hot committee. I feel powerful moving that forward. That was my question, that's so that could be resolved, and then I guess I turn back to the ladies on the parts of rep committee. I mean, this bridge, how critical is it in their master plan?
Oh, it's at um, the reservoir, not over park. But I appreciate.
Don't they oversee the trail system?
Um. Loosely. Not really. Yeah.
Nobody oversees the trail system? Not really.
They're like individual groups, right, that do, because there's.
So the trail system is comprised of. Several different entities that are in the trails, being city, state. Um, and and private ownership, so I pay, refer to trail system, probably a lot of posts, we talk about trails behind. Or I mean, that's that's obviously. What I would propose and and um. I'll speak to my own thoughts about this, which I mean, pretty public in in our quality with instruction committee. I think we have a real opportunity to develop some of our watershed land to the trails up on E Street. Um, and so the committee kind of. Asked me or asked me, or maybe I volunteered to look at the development, so actually, next week, we'll be walking out there with a little group of. Former students that are now coming to build, not by specific trails. That are also great walkable trails and and acceptable and maps of what we're talking about, they think there's some great opportunities there. They create grants, they they get grants, people to fund building trails. So there's no kind of. Plan here, there's no, of course, I need to run this pastor, but the approval kind of began thinking about this. In my vision, we have an opportunity to be able to utilize the E Street land for some gray trails. They connect into this Wolver Park for both kind of recreational access by folks in the community, as well, they do bring folks in that wanna ride. Or or run or walk natural system. So I'm basically for this, because I think if we have a bit of a long term vision towards this place being enhanced. I think we could have a really interesting opportunity here in that particular area of our um. Of our copper.
There's nothing like the view of Wolver Bay from the bridge, by the way. You know, just in terms of the quality of like a picture. Just. Throw that out there, some of the vision that I would do. So, yes, Dave, what's the deadline, Greg, um, when we have to have everything designated, what was in the box for the the first seven hundred thirteen that's left?
Uh, for for all, for all of your. You have a, every piece that it and file, committed to what. We're gonna spend on, we have to spend in bonds by the end of this. I'm sorry, man. We acted in design, we.
We have to designate what we're spending money on before. So out of what's left here between New York, I'm looking at your detail, New York, our performance stage, the trail bridge replacement. Basketball court, number one relocation, the state park rehab, playground improvements and the sidewalk. What did we agree to? Do you hear? I mean, at the performance stage, I think we have an agreement. We agreed to be, it didn't sound like we have agreement for track or any place.
I think that was.
That was my question now. Okay, well, see, that's something I've heard from constituents over the last couple of years. So they wanted it.
That was also a problem I was trying to think that you had posed. Being now without what we should submit to the county. I think that was either the most popular or the most popular choice.
But relative to the Wilbur, um, Lake Bridge, I guess that's the thing. If we have a range among council, but that is something that's.
Yes.
We have any other agreement here at any of the remaining four areas?
Yeah.
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 So that's thirteen thousand two hundred and thirty four.
Um, that was the remainder.
Right.
But it's going to cost.
Oh, I'm sure. We did proceed with. Getting some ideas um, from the group that's working on. Performance stages, simply see the cost might be. Proceeding bidding, constructing the over lake, see where we're at, that might not have much of a purchase. Yeah, so we think that's us to where we need to be, which nice. See what we have. So with that, then I think we'll end the discussion portion of the agenda and I'll ask if there's any addition to this.
I wanted to, I didn't really have the moment, um, early on, returning to the very start of this meeting where we were. Uh, informed by the gentleman from BSD that we had a clean audit and really I wanted to thank you both and, and rest of my team for that. And that's like, it's outstanding. I think that, that he certainly tended that point to be able to have such a clean audit. Uh, for several years running. So thank you very much for all the hard work that you all put into it starting in January, or sorry, in July. Uh, I also wanted to take the opportunity to thank Ms. Marising for her generous gift to the city. I appreciate her vision for. Um, the park and, and that her split netted part. So I, I just um, virtually secure her interest in. Giving it, get to be to create a gate that so, um, she's listening, my thanks.
Yes, we were kind of talking about master plans for the parks and Mark, we had brought up, um, mountain biking. I wanted to ask about the.
So, um. Trying to work with the OTA, the National Trail Association to work this kind of non-profit group that. Work with us in the contract, but we'll get that figured out at every level. Um, the OTA had a lot of very good questions. We need to do a lot of kind of internal investigation here. Um, I think we are now all in agreement that the OTA is very supportive of the contract. Uh, what I've done now is to ask the um, ad hoc group that I can put together. Uh, to, to send out the different recommendations for grants that are out there and I'm proceeding to begin to apply these grants, mostly grants of. Starting the new year, so I do have a bit of time. My hope is to be able to have several grants submitted, um. By their dates, hopefully early New Year and hopefully we can get some, get something approved and we can begin to move forward and be able to then. Receive that grant and give to the city to be able to do that. I do have a developer by. He has a lot of experience having worked in different uh, contracts in New York State. He has a real kind of cheap model that he works on, a lot of volunteers, um, and, and really asks the community. Now, I think we have to ask them to be able to do that. Um, so I'm hopeful. Hopefully we're going to get this a while ago, but it seems like things are beginning to align that, that perhaps we can have this. Um, really best case scenario by April or by spring, I should say. Um, and perhaps we're kissing arrow as about a fall and others being incredibly optimistic, but um. You know, I think that things are lining up. We just need to get the grant money to be able to support it, um. And we have a, not just like kind of proposal or pump trap and entire program try to benefit the. The youth of Oregon that to be able to safely learn how to use a crack and begin to develop something else like.
Thank you.
I'd be happy to, happy to share that with you in the meanwhile, to let you see the kind of framework that I'll be sending out for the grand proposal.
Dave. Uh, yeah, this is for Greg and Steven, actually. Um. My committee, uh, a clique had talked about, uh, both certified local government status. And there's also been the talk about from, I think, of two thousand, their study to expand the historic districts or look to potentially expand the historic districts. Um, I just want to point a clarification, um, and either one of you can answer this with a tone. Uh, because the certified local government status for everybody else is with, what comes with that is a local preservation board. That would allow for review of work or demo on historic buildings and we take care of some of the issues we've had over the years. But the certified local government says we can't work on that until after, I think, of two thousand's work is done. Is that true? Certified local government, the program for National Park Service, it's administered through SHPO. Where the local government is able to basically have an architectural review board for locally designated historic. Districts. Those districts are created by that board typically in conjunction with pre-surveyed historic districts. Which are national registered districts, which are downtown, Wall Street currently are. Okay. Has any work been done toward obtaining that status yet? Or is that something that we need to? Which I think is on the agenda. It is, okay. Yeah, great. So we haven't, we haven't witnessed reviewed by SHPO. Okay, theoretically could be approved by our, by our local government and by. The council, okay, that has been sitting in one vote for more than a year. Oh, that's right. Yeah. Sitting where in limbo. I just want to give a shout out to the. Noah's World, um, the award, they had a trunk and trees on Saturday. I'm saying, I was having a beautiful day. I think it was more than two hundred and seven kids. So many that they have to have a creative schedule. Um, it's kind of cool. My son, daughter-in-law and I, we participated. It was just amazing to see all the kids in there. And then office, but yeah, two hundred and seventy plus kids from show, so Noah's World. Three weeks, Scott. So. I'm going to give a shout out to only on fire department. Uh, they came down the way out of Boys and Girls Club, so I guess it's a shout out from Boys and Girls Club too. Good for their trunk and tree. And actually, they had car pumpkins and they were getting right into it. I think, uh. I think the fire department had just as much fun as the kids did and I saw. I did not go to the parade, but I saw the pictures and stuff of the ladder truck coming down through the smoke coming off of it and. It was very nice to, to see. I, I don't think I've ever seen a city fire truck dressed up before and. I was just, it's, it's great to see community, the community engagement coming from our. Our departments, it's, you know. Nobody does help me better. Do we have any other council members that want to share anything? Okay, um, do we have any correspondence? We have no correspondence. Is there any need for an executive session? There is none. In that case. Return. Thank you, folks.
Good night, everybody.